Right, and I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 6, 2021, to order. This is a notice that this meeting may be conducted by a combination of in-person and electronic means following a determination by City Manager Kelly Bourgeois and emergencies declared by the United States, State of Minnesota, and Columbia Heights Mayor and City Council. This meeting may pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.021 occur by a combination of in-person and electronic means. In all meeting formats, members of the public who may wish to attend may do so in person or by calling 1-312-6267, I'm sorry, 6799. Enter meeting ID 89432583713, passcode 080180, or by Zoom at the address listed in the notes, which I'm not going to read out because it would take all night. For any other questions regarding this notice, please contact the city clerk at 763-706-3611. So our first order of business tonight is to swear in our new Commissioner Clara Wolf.
Hi Clara.
Hi.
Welcome Clara.
I'll have you stand up and raise your right hand for me, and I'll have you repeat after me. I, Clara Wolf.
I, Clara Wolf.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Minnesota.
And the State of Minnesota.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Discharge faithfully.
Discharge faithfully.
The duties devolving.
The duties devolving.
Upon me as a planning commission member.
A planning commissioner.
Member of the City of Columbia Heights.
Member of the City of Columbia Heights.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I would also like to welcome a new, our new City Planner, Minerva Hark.
Here.
You're Minerva. Hi, Minerva.
Alicia's new.
Alicia, I'm sorry, I haven't met either of you, so I apologize.
We didn't see our names flash, but we should.
No, we did not.
Excellent. So, so welcome, Minerva.
Thank you.
And then, you're going to take, tell me your name again, I'm sorry.
Alicia.
Alicia is going to take us through the election of officers.
All right. Officer elections are held annually. In order for a member to be considered for an officer position, they must be nominated by another Planning Commission member or nominate themselves. We can now open the floor for nominations for Chairperson of the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much.
I nominate Rob Fiorendino.
I second.
I'll second.
Okay. Are there any further nominations? Being that there are no further nominations, we'll close the floor for nominations for Chairperson of the Planning Commission. Do you, Rob Fiorendino, consent to the nomination?
I do.
All right. May I have a motion to elect Rob Fiorendino as the Chairperson of the Planning Commission?
I make a motion to elect Rob as the Chairman of the Planning Commission.
Can I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Nowitzki?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Fiorendino?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Hoyam?
Yes.
Vargas?
Yes.
Sanao?
Yes.
All right.
And now I take it from here, right?
Yep, you may take it from here.
Excellent. And we have a secretary position, is it, or vice chair first?
Vice chair.
All right, we'll now open the nominations for the election of Vice Chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Stan.
Stan, is there a second?
I would decline it. I'll nominate Vargas.
Mr. Hoyam has declined Mark. Is there a second for Mark?
I'll second Mark.
Excellent. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, the nominating process is now closed. Mark, do you accept the nomination for Vice Chair?
Yes.
Excellent. Let's, so can we, we please have a roll call vote?
Nowitzki?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Fiorendino?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Hoyam?
Yes.
Vargas?
Yes.
Sanao?
Yes.
Excellent. Congratulations, Mark. And then, is there one more position?
Secretary.
Secretary, thank you, thank you. Yes, so now we'll open up nominations for the position of Secretary. Are there any nominations?
Well, I'll nominate.
I nominate Tom Kaiser.
I'll second Tom.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that Tom Kaiser become our Secretary. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Nowitzki?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Fiorendino?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Hoyam?
Yes.
Vargas?
Yes.
Sanao?
Yes.
Excellent, congratulations. I believe that's it for officers. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the February 2, 2021 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as written?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second motion? It's been moved and seconded. We approve the minutes as written for February 2, 2021. May we please have a roll call vote? By the way, all votes are required to be roll call at this point.
Nowitzki?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Fiorendino?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Hoyam?
Yes.
Vargas?
Yes.
Sanao?
Yes.
Excellent. Minutes are approved. Our next item for business is the site plan review for the Effendina Cafe. Planner Hark, will you please take us through this?
Good evening Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, those attending on Zoom and all in-person here as applicants or just attendees. My name is Minerva Hark, and I'm the new City Planner here for the City of Columbia Heights. I'd like to confirm, can those of you joining us on Zoom see the presentation on the screen shared?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Let us begin.
I see the, the meeting agenda, but that's it.
I'll fix that, one second. How about now?
Perfect. All good, thanks.
Okay. So the first public meeting item for tonight is a site plan review for Effendina Cafe at 4001 University Avenue Northeast, located at the intersection of University Avenue and 40th Avenue. The applicant Louis Kader is proposing the addition of a paver patio with an upper deck and roof along the north wall of the existing restaurant building. The proposed patio is 833 square feet with a 288 square foot upper deck. As part of this project, an existing unpermitted deck located in the northeastern portion of the lot is to be demolished, and all property fences are to comply with the city's height restriction of six feet. The property in question is located in the general business zoning district, an area in which the comprehensive plan guides for commercial uses. The properties to the north and east are located in the multiple-family residential zoning district, also known as R3, and the properties locate across University Avenue to the west are also located in the R3 zone. The properties to the south are located in the general business zoning district. The subject property is within the design guidelines overlay district and is governed by the 40th Avenue District standards. The building addition is proposed to be a covered roof over an open patio area. The roofing material will include weathered wood-colored fiberglass asphalt shingles, and edge rafters will be faced with stained rough sawn plywood. The applicant, oop, the applicant is proposing a slight expansion in use within the allowable boundaries where parking standards will be met and maintained. The project will be conditioned to minimize noise impacts to adjacent properties, match the existing building, as well as bring the property to code. This includes, but is not limited to, the demolition of the existing non-conforming deck and boundary fencing not to exceed six feet in height. One email was received by a neighbor in opposition of the project, and that correspondence has been included in your packets. The city finds the proposed site plan to be conforming to all applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance, consistent with the applicable provisions of the city's comprehensive plan, and consistent with any applicable area plan. Additionally, the proposed site plan minimizes any adverse impacts on properties in the immediate vicinity and the public right of way. Therefore, the city recommends approval by the Planning Commission. I'm available for any questions.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Are there any members of the Commission who would like to ask city staff questions?
Other than, I think it's a.
Stan, go ahead, please.
It's a lousy idea. I don't, I don't understand how that upper deck overlooking those other backyards and overlooking that daycare does not sound like a wise idea.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for city staff?
Well, it's with Stan, I don't think the, you know, the height deal, the deck for what's going on in that neighborhood, I don't think really fits the landscape or the type of area.
What's an unpermitted deck coming down? With all the problems we had with that property, how did an unpermitted deck get put up in the first place?
Is that, that sounds like a question.
It was kind of a question.
Minerva, I know you weren't here when that happened, do you have any information about that?
So I know the property was originally approved for a patio, but what was built was not, what was approved, what was built, try to locate it, is right here in the northwesterly corner, or sorry, the northeasterly corner. It exists very close, if not on the property line. As part of this project, it will be removed. The proposed deck addition, sorry, patio and deck addition is attached to the existing building to, for the facade to match as well, as the setbacks will be compliant, as this is the rear setback, and this is the side setback right there.
And the other question I got, how do they keep the fence so high so long and be out of compliance when I know people have mentioned that it's been out of compliance? Did anybody communicate that with them?
I know that it has, it had been communicated.
Yeah.
I'll have Aaron discuss it.
Just a little, just, just because Minerva wasn't here for the beginning of this project.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Aaron Sherbit, Community Development Director, the, the violations were brought to city staff attention, and the building official conducted a site inspection and issued a stop work order a few months prior to this meeting. I don't remember the exact date, but it was right before winter. So, we, we knew there were some issues with some unpermitted work going on, that's why the stop work notice was issued. We intervened, you know, and let the owner know that some of this work wasn't approved as part of the original site plan, and we don't have the building permits that are necessary for these improvements, the deck and some of the patio footings and things like that. So we just hit the reset button, said we need to rein this in, see where we left off at the 2013 improvements for the original site plan, what has changed, what's deviated, and what is not compliant, and, and create a, a plan towards compliance. So that's kind of how we got to this point. So the, the plans that you have before you this evening are a, a combination of some of the improvements that were approved in 2013, which was a patio off the north end. It's gotten a little bigger under this proposal, and then the deck, the deck section was never part of any original proposal. So, reining in what had gone awry in, in some of that work that we can't approve because there's no path to compliance, that being the, the surface deck on the northernmost edge of the property, and then finding what can be approved according to code and moving on from there. So, that's really how we got to this evening.
And help me understand the current statu, state of the area that the new deck is going to be in now.
Okay, so, I don't know the.
And I know that, I know the, the.
Right.
Owner is here, we'll probably get to questions for him later.
So the existing non-conforming deck is wooden in this vicinity, it's built in and around some trees.
Yep.
That, we don't have a path to compliance.
Yep.
Because of setbacks, and we would also exceed the seating capacity standards as it relates to parking, so that.
That's a main level deck only, right?
That, that's at grade, more or less, maybe six inches off the ground.
Mm-hmm.
And then the paver patio is here, originally, in 2013, it was approved for a paver patio in this same vicinity. It's since grown with this proposal slightly, and then this deck here, right under the, the laser, I'm sorry for those on Zoom, but that deck is totally new, was never proposed and is an addition.
Is that elevated at all?
Elev, yes.
What's the height of that?
Nine feet.
Okay.
The drawing, the drawings are a little tough to read, but you see that the first one from footing is nine feet.
Yep.
And then the deck would be above that grade.
Okay. And that was never in the original.
That was.
Plan, correct?
That's correct.
I certainly don't remember that as part of that.
It was just a patio section with a pergola-type structure above it, and this, this new plan is a pitched roof, you know, that will actually shed water, that pergola that was originally proposed was open to the.
So, but just so I understand, all the dining would happen on the ground, is that right? And there will, there would be no dining in the, it's, I'm, I'm sorry, I should've.
So the floor, the floor plan of the deck and the patio that is shown provides, I believe, 32 seats on the patio and 12 seats on the deck.
Okay, so there would be.
So three tables.
Twelve seats on the upper lot.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That clarifies things. Um, yeah, please, Mark. Let's do Mark, and then Tom, you can go ahead.
I have a question about where the building drains now. I looked at the back of the building, and there's a gutter system there, and then I'm also curious where and how the increased flow from the new roof, how is that going to be handled? Because it looks like there's a drainage area, and my other question is, those look like abandoned lots from a previous six, five, and four. I, I didn't see in the survey any indication of abandoned wells or any type of GSOC ticket called in. So it seems like there's a very limited amount of information within the plans, and it would be hard to, you know, say yes to something like that with that limited amount of information. Not only saying no because, just to say no, but it's setting up the owner for a lot of compliance issues that are going to come back and be impossible to, to achieve with the, the way that the drainage and the, and the building is structured.
And I'm not sure if the applicant has a representative to speak on the drainage.
I think those questions are more geared for the applicant at this point.
Yeah, let's, Mark, let's hold that question, and we will have the applicant up to answer some questions, absolutely. Great. And was there somebody on Zoom, Tom, was that you on Zoom that wanted to jump in?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I have a question for city staff. I'm wondering if there's anything in city code that is specifically tailored to rooftop patios in any way, and in addition to that, if there is, if there's anything related to, you know, fencing or sound screening for, for rooftop patios, because that is my primary concern here because it's so directly about single-family homes.
Thank you for that question. So the, the city code as it currently is does not address anything about rooftop decks or second level decks in regards to commercial development or even residential. What we do have is we, we have asked the applicant to provide screening from, from residential, maybe not in a structural way, because we don't have that, it's not written in the code, it's not required in the code, but we have made that suggestion to the applicant in order to provide that sort of buffer between residential and commercial.
And, so thank you for that, and so if I'm, if I'm hearing that correctly, then that would only be to a maximum height of six feet, and according to city guidelines, is that right?
So the six-foot maximum is for property line fencing. These railings, so the, the upper deck does have a proposed railing around it, and that is not subject to a six-foot height limitation, because it is a railing and not a property line fence. So it's considered as part of the structure.
Okay, so, you know, maybe I'm reading too much into this, but I feel like we're edging into what might be a, a blind spot in the city code, or maybe that's just specific to this site, just because it's, you know, such a high-value, high-activity site that's right up against residential. So anyway, thank you, you answered my question, I appreciate it.
Great. Are there any other questions for city staff? Yes.
I do have a question. There was an original proposal, and that was not followed, the guidelines for that were not followed, so are there, are there, is there, what's in place, I guess, for if this is approved, to ensure that the, the new proposal is followed, the guidelines are followed?
Commissioner Wolf, can I ask you to turn your microphone just a little bit closer?
Oh, sure.
Just so the folks on Zoom.
Absolutely.
Would you, would you maybe repeat your question?
Sure. So the, the question was, the original guidelines or compliance for the original approval was not, were not followed, so my question is, what is in place to ensure that if this is approved and goes forward, that the, that the guidelines will be followed?
So as default, the, the existing, so we would take, so we do have six conditions here listed on the proposed resolution for the approval of this project. Any applicable conditions that were previously on this project would still hold standing so long as they're relevant, right? So for example, if there was once a pool, very silly example, but if there was once a swimming pool on-site, and there was a condition regarding swimming pool fencing, and now there's a new site can, site plan that does not include a swimming pool, then that condition is moot. However, the standing conditions on the previous site plan do still have standing here. The six conditions that are proposed in addition to that involve compliance with Building and Fire Code, minimizing noise impacts to adjacent properties, color, color and design sort of so that it follows the design guidelines of the city, fencing, as we mentioned before, and again, all unpermitted structures to be removed, and the final building plans to be signed by a design professional and approved by the building department. So the, the previous conditions, as there were many for the previous site plan, I have those listed here if you would like me to read those out.
Yeah. That'd be great, thank you.
All application materials, maps, plans, drawing, oh, hold on, I think I might have mixed it out of order, just one second. Six, seven, four, and five, okay. So yes, all application materials, maps, plans, drawings, and descriptive information submitted with this application shall become part of the permit. Any new signage incorporated into the building or site shall meet the requirement of the 40th Avenue Design Guidelines District and shall be approved through the signed permit process. The memorandum from the Public Works Director and City Engineer dated November 13, 2013 shall be a competent, shall be a component of this approval. The sidewalk and median on the south side of the building shall be changed from a width of six feet to a width of seven feet to better accommodate front vehicle overhang and pedestrian access. The existing payphone and clothing drop box on the southwest side of the site shall be removed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The location of the future gas meter shall be shown on all future plans. The two proposed parking spaces adjacent to the patio area on the north side of the parking shall not be constructed and shall be removed from future site plans. Future site plans must clarify and the driveway location off of the Highway 47 frontage road as well as surface runoff from the east side of the site. The building shall be sprinkled. Parking areas adjacent to the residential property shall be screened with fencing and/or landscaping that is 80% opaque year-round. The visual appearance of the trash enclosure shall be consistent with the visual appearance of the building. The fence along the east side yard, sorry, the east side yard property line shall be repaired and made compliant with the city's property maintenance standards, and the hours of operation of the outdoor patio are restricted from open to 9:00 PM on Sundays through Thursday and open to 10:00 PM on Fridays and Saturday. So those are the previous conditions from Resolution Number 2013, PZ03.
Thank you very much.
I got a question. He parks, or they park two vehicles on the accessway on the service road that would put them out of compliance from the previous, which you just read, because there's no way to get into that building off the service road, because he always has two vehicles parked there blocking that entrance.
Yeah.
So that puts them out of compliance there, correct?
I would have to look at the, I would, I don't have them accessible now, but I would have to pull up the old approved site plans and see exactly what those two spots they were talking about to be removed, because it was just describing it here, it didn't.
You said there was an entrance on the service road plus 40th. There is no entrance on the service road because he blocks it off with vehicles.
Okay.
There is an apron there.
Yes, but there's two vehicles there that never allow anything in.
All right, thank you. Yeah.
I have an additional question for city staff.
Please.
We've talked about some of the motions that are included in this, in this recommendation, and motion number two talks about the use of the outdoor patio shall minimize noise impact on adjacent properties. I'm curious, conversations that staff has had with the applicant on how they're going to minimize the noise and how city intends to enforce those noise restrictions.
So there has been minimal conversation regarding this condition as we wait, because the operation is unclear, it should just be for dining and for, for hours certain, right, as listed in the previous approval. How that noise, if, if there is any noise impact, and how that would be mitigated, would be through the, the police department, and then calls of service from the neighbors. There, this, as this is just a site plan review, it is not a conditional use permit. Operational, operational plans were not discussed in detail here, as we are just looking at the structure and how it complies to zoning setbacks, height, design, and so on.
And just to confirm, there is no conditional use permit on this property at this time, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, there is none.
Thank you.
Can I just add some comments on, you know, noise mitigation? So if you look at the specific development standards for restaurants, which were part of the review of the original site plan, they're, they're not very exhaustive, and one of the conditions is that amplified sounds will not be audible from residential property lines. All of these sound-related type, and that's, that's amplified, so, you know, artificially created, not voices certainly, or talking, so music or any sort of anything being played should not be heard at a residential property line. Compliance with these types of things is always difficult for any city. It's really complaint-driven. If it gets to be too much of an issue where the police department has to, you know, intervene on a nuisance call, that's really the primary mechanism, you know, we don't go and monitor it. It's just a, an issue that any city deals with when you've got these commercial and residential areas that, that join, and we've got them all over the city, so there isn't a perfect sound wall or guarantee that we can ever give as staff. We, we rely on the nuisance ordinances that the city has for excessive noise, and some pretty vague standards around coexistence, if you will. The, the fence provides screening, there's vegetative screening as well from the trees in the vicinity, and, and above and beyond that, staff doesn't have any recommendations. I, I think we would ask the applicant to speak to operations a little bit and, and tell this commission how they intend to mitigate noise and, and how they will operate so we can get a better sense of that. But beyond that, it, it is, there's no perfect noise solution or, or guarantee that we can provide.
The location of their second floor deck though is, I mean, that's a balcony overlooking all these backyards.
Yeah, and I think.
How are you going to mitigate that?
And I, Stan, I think that's a really good point, and I want to address that almost separately, because it's, I think that's the only real grounds that we have to deny this application, if I may, if I may, do you mind?
Please.
Thank you. I mean, I think that the finding, we have to make four findings of fact as a group, and we have limited power to do this because there's not a conditional use permit in place. However, if it does not meet the, all four findings of fact, we're obligated to say no. I think A, B, and C are probably all, in my opinion, it meets that. Now, I don't know that this site plan does minimize any adverse effects on the property in the immediate vicinity, and I think if it's the opinion of the commission that it does not, then it's our responsibility to deny, to deny this. So I mean, is, is that, does that help you at all? I mean, does that, does that kind of address what you were kind of getting at?
Again, having it a balcony and then next door to the kids.
Yeah.
You know, so the privacy fence around the daycare, there's two ways, you know, you want some guys up there looking at, over at your kids. I don't know, just does not look like a good setup to me, at all.
Sure.
I want to, if I may, I wanted to add one other, other thing on that note. Because this is a site plan review and not a conditional use permit discussion, and also building on what Aaron was just saying that, you know, we do have examples that are at least remotely similar to this throughout the city, what I think is so important about this case in particular is that this is, this is a bad site plan. I mean, it's unfortunate that this lot is set up the way that it is. I mean, it's unfortunate that this lot is set up the way that it is. In a perfect world for this business, it would not be laid out this way. The building itself would be directly at the corner of University and 40th, and the parking, the quiet part of the use of this lot would be up against those houses. And unfortunately, we can't change that. And I feel like if we are providing not only an outdoor patio, but also a raised, you know, rooftop deck, I mean, mitigating the sound of that, I think is frankly impossible. And in driving around this area last night, checking it out, I think we'd be hard pressed to find an area where we're going to find such a stark contrast between uses and such a high profile location directly abutting such a quiet residential neighborhood. I mean, I feel like we're setting up city staff and the owner of these properties, both the applicant and the, the neighbors, as well as our city's police department in terms of enforcement, I feel like we're setting everyone up for a really bad situation if we approve this, because it seems like it's just destined to fail unless there is some sort of insanely effective noise mitigation component to this. So I'll be really curious to hear from the applicant, because I, I agree with Commissioner Member Hoyum, this seems like a, a very bad idea.
I'd like to add one more thing, too, and we got another mitigation there, that we're right up against a daycare that we're complaining before of neighbors taking pictures of the daycare kids. And now you're going to be elevated to be able to do why we had to put up that other fence to keep them private.
All right. Are there any other, before we move on to the applicant, are there any other questions of city staff? Yes, please.
I have a question as far as approval for this. Are we able to make a limitation on approving part and not all of the proposed plan?
Absolutely. So the way that you guys can move forward with this is you can either approve the project as is proposed, you can deny the project as is proposed, and you can make any alterations. You can add conditions, remove conditions, so long as that's clearly communicated to us, we can do that on the spot. A, a, a method that I'm not sure is used, is used here too often is to table it and have it come back for next hearing if there is substantial changes that are requested by the commission.
It has been used in the past, but it is rare.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I, and I do believe, too, that we would really only be able to add conditions that would address letter D on the findings of fact.
Yeah, so correct. The conditions would have to be relevant to the site plan review directly and not, they, I can, they can be conditioned, but again, this is not a conditional use permit, so the operation is not really what's on the, you know, discussed at this time. It would have to directly relate to the construction that is being proposed.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we move on?
If I could, Director of City Staff, and this is, this is a little bit outside of the, well, it's outside of the purview of the planning commission, but just a reminder to city staff that part of this review will be the Minnesota State Accessibility Code, and that talks about how you need to disperse accessible seating equally throughout the city or throughout the, the property. And if you read the commentary on that, it talks about unique seating areas, and so this deck would be considered a unique seating area, and I would hope to see some sort of accessible components leading up to that limited deck area.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you very much. Is there, all right, no further questions for city staff. I would ask the applicant to please come up to the podium to answer some questions, please.
How you doing today?
Hello, hello, welcome.
How you doing today?
Good, how are you? And please tell us your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Louis Kader, 4001 University Avenue. I don't know, I'm trying to make something nice, I don't know what you guys, but for that deck, you know, we're very flexible, you know, but I was thinking I can build a back for privacy, the gentleman we mentioned, for the kids or the back, I can cover those two sides, they don't have to see, I don't know, what you guys.
And how important is that upper level for you? I mean, would you, would you?
Actually, I'm making it more as a decoration more than people, I don't want people to sit, I don't want to go up and down, you know, I'm just trying to make it look like the Middle Eastern look, like those old houses.
Okay, so it sounds like you're very willing to adjust the, the whole of site plan.
I'm very flexible, you know, whatever you guys, you know, we're very easy people to work, you know, we're just trying to, you know, I have the outside seating, I'm just adding the roof, basically, if that balcony is bothering you, I can put it against the building, you don't want it, I don't care, you know, so, you know, I can use a balcony and use underneath that balcony, maybe, people can sit underneath, make a roof or whatever.
So it sounds to me like we might be in tabling this territory, but let's see if there are any questions from the commission for you, sir. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Other than if that little balcony could go to the front of the building, I don't know if it'd be as bad a deal. It's the, it's the property behind it, like I said, it looks like a balcony, or, yeah, balcony, you're overlooking everything.
So instead of that top one, I don't have to use that top? I can't, I don't know if we can cut that, the one we have, the existing half of it or?
Yeah, I mean, I personally find it hard to understand how we could have a seating in the upper level without disturbing the neighbors significantly.
I think if we cover the back of it, I think would be, I, I think, if you guys don't think it's.
All right. Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, sir. At this point, I will also, before we move on to possible action on this, I will ask that this is now a public hearing, if there is anyone from the public who would like to address the commission at this time, whether you're on Zoom or whether you're in person, I don't know, do we have any participants on Zoom who, we do, okay, great. Well, let's do the, let's do you, sir. Tell us your name, please, and.
My name is Jim Mackey, I'm the architect. I live in St. Paul, I'm originally from Columbia Heights. So if you looked at the floor plan, that one there, I do have noted on the east edge a four foot high screen wall, not an open rail, but I was talking with Louis, primarily...
Is that on, is that on the upper level, you mean?
Yes, a four foot screen, it's noted on the plan up there.
That's fine, thank you, I'm just clarifying.
Right there. But I can tell you that primarily the reason that Louis wanted this was for hookah, so that people who are doing hookah are not on the, not on the ground level. Primarily, obviously, the reason, the, the reason for the, for the roof is that, as you should know, with restaurants, outdoor seating in our summer months is really a plus, because our summers are short and people like to dine outside. But with that said, I think we would be willing just to eliminate that upper deck, but I think the roof over the patio is a real plus for the business.
Yeah, I don't think anybody here would probably argue with you on that one.
That's all I wanted to say.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Is there anyone on Zoom who wants to, to speak right now? Okay, not seeing anybody. I saw someone here raise their hand, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, sir. And please let us know your name and your address, please.
I'm Anthony Mayer, 4025, I own the daycare business next door, the property, and the upper patio, the upper deck, I wasn't aware until I drove by one day and seen the upper higher wall, which bothered me because now it approaches my backyard of the daycare that I lease, and it just felt in violation of the kids. It just seems rather, and it exceeds the limit of the high wall of a six foot privacy fence, and it just seemed approaching in the backyard. And then the noise restrictions, the kids can't be out after a certain hour making noise, you know, why could we have music making a certain noise? Why would we make an exception for that? Kids, I don't remember what we came up with last year, but we accommodated and made sure we did in compliance, but now why would we, music can go later, but then kids can't play later in the evening. So why would we have a separation of that?
So you, so just to be clear, you're kind of objecting to the, the upper patio?
I, I do not want the upper patio, I, I find that, and then especially if there are going to be a smoke and a hookah up there, you know, and it could be happening at lunchtime, well, there's kids out there playing, that's not fair to them neither. Because I mean, it is, it is a childcare center, it's, you know, we don't need that coming through. And I'm just, came because it bothered me, and I, and I have nothing against Louis, it's just, it's just not conductive as a daycare provider next door, you know, and that's, I mean, because the lot got grubbed out and then now the parking lines are all the way up to the property line, and there is no screaming, you've got trees, they'll grow eventually, but it's, you know, it's just enough.
Thank you very much.
And I think the noise restriction, I think we need to relook at that, because if the daycare hours have restrictions of outside activity, I think we need to look in the compliance of that, too.
I, I completely agree with you on that one, and I think it's, the city staff is kind of aware of our, of our situation, and the regulations between commercial property and residential property are maybe a little bit lax right now.
Right. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other, any other people that would like to speak on the public? Welcome, sir, please let us know your name and where you live.
My name is Nick, I am actually, I'm an owner of the property on 4024 on Fourth Street.
Okay.
I guess I'm extremely concerned about the upper deck. I mean, it, it looks right over into my backyard, and I understand that they're willing to adjust the, the plans at this moment, but they said that last time, too, because we were part of that meeting and they never followed through. I mean, if you look at the current building and the upkeep of, of the property, I think, I think he owns the lot behind it, too. The upkeep of both of them has been abysmal. I mean, I have pictures in my phone of tarps being up there, garbage being in the front lot forever, but garbage being in, in the additional lot, and you saw the pictures that one of my neighbors sent of the patio. I mean, it's, it's, so.
You're not the only one in the city who's noticed.
So I, I'm, the trust issue isn't there, that he's going to build a proper structure, keep the noise down, I don't want to be calling the cops. I mean, last summer, there were people out there and they had fires going all the way up until, I think me and my wife were talking about that up till 11 o'clock at night at times. So they're not following the rules that they had set for them currently, so why are they going to follow these rules? Because they're in the planning meeting this time. So I guess I'm strongly against the upper deck for sure, I was against the lower deck, and they didn't really give me reasons to change my mind against the lower deck, because they didn't, they didn't follow the, the guidelines that were given to them previously. They knew they were building this guy, this lower deck, and they still didn't pull permits. So the restaurant, I have no, I understand that we need the business in, in Columbia Heights, but I mean, we need the right business, and we need business owners that are going to actually make the neighborhood better instead of just coming in there to get their bet. And so, no, they haven't been good neighbors. I mean, no offense, but I mean, it's, it's, it's not clean, it's not maintained, and it's definitely not up to code. I mean, and it was all part of, part of the original agreement, so I guess that's all I have to say, so.
Very good, thank you very much. Yeah, absolutely, yeah, if there's, you sure can, absolutely.
I just have a.
Please come up to the microphone, so that everybody on.
I just have a comment about everything outside. I never put a nail without permission of Ryan, and he says it's not, since it's not attached to the building, do whatever you want. I'm not going to put $20,000 wood and then he's going to tell me, take it out, you know, never happened any, not even a nail, and you can't ask Sherry, and I even, when I talk to him about this, I got it recorded, you can, you know, I got everything, I never touched anything, you know, for the stuff outside, you know, after we bought everything with approval of Ryan, then he said you got to go through planning, that's the why the stuff is there, you know, and we're not the people always complaining. We always have garbage in our lot, we have mattresses, I never called the city, you know, they're doing this and this. And for the frontage road, you know, they start even hitting the curbs and going to the other side. Since that frontage road been closed, it's a disaster for us, you know.
So you're saying that, are you, are you saying that garbage just accumulates on your property that you don't know how it gets there?
I mean, I got, if, from the daycare, three times a guy running over the curb between those posts to go to the other side.
So isn't it still your responsibility, though, to keep your property clean, even if you're not the one that put the garbage there?
No, Matt, no, I'm telling you, usually I don't complain, I'm just saying.
You do take care of it, you're saying you don't complain about it, I see.
But the stuff now, it's, we're just waiting, I bought the wood and the stuff cost me $20,000, and then they told me you got to go through this, you know. If I knew that, I could have, you know, I have too many offers from the African American Development. I got two, two or three people wants to buy the property, and I say, you know, let me see what's going to happen, you know. You know, that outside is really addition for me, I can cancel that inside, you know, because people, they don't want to sit inside with that Corona nowadays. If you want to prove it, fine, if it's not, you know, I can sell it, you know, big deal, you know.
Thank you.
You know, thank you.
Question from Mr. Kader? Mr. Kader?
Mr. Kader? Commissioner Vargas has a question for you.
Yes, you mentioned that you have people making offers on, on your property currently?
You know, I got too many offers before from the, they want to put a fast food restaurant, and it's going to be two.
Apartments, fast food, that type of thing, that's who's offering you money for your property currently?
Yeah, I always deny, you know, I love to make my money, you know, at least, you know.
So just, I'm, I'm making this point because your business wants to do a certain thing, and it's not likely to get approved by this committee, which puts pressure on you for your business, and the alternate to a business that has restaurants and serves food is an apartment building like they have in Fridley or Northeast Minneapolis, so, you know, the choices that we.
You know, I care about the neighbors, too, you know, I don't want that noise to go, you know, when I approve, I, I think of him and him and everybody, you know, it's not just me.
Yeah, I guess.
I'm not a selfish person, I want to be sure the neighbors, they're happy, too.
Carefully wish, Faro, is all I'm trying to say.
Making it for me.
So, not, not directed to you, but for the rest of us.
So, Mr. Kader, I mean, would you, would you still move forward with this project if we tabled it for a month so that you could get a new plan that does not include the upper deck?
I'm trying to catch up, you know, that.
Because I think that's kind of the alternative, is either it's going to be denied, that's my gut feeling, is that it's going to be denied, or we can table it and give you some time to come back with some new plans that do not include the upper deck.
I don't want the upper deck, just approve the roof and, you know.
You'd have to resubmit plans before we know what you're looking at.
I know, but I don't have to come through city council.
I know, you're going to maybe clean up the debris and everything in the back and stack everything.
That's why all the wood that's belonged to that.
Right, but the people are looking at it right now, and that's giving you, the neighbors a bad feeling for your whole project.
I know, but you want me to put the stuff if, if Ryan.
Stack it up nice on the patio, or, you know, I don't know, this is not your decision.
You know, like, my loss with this, it's at least $10,000 worth of wood, you know, because.
I'm just saying, would you like that, pictures of your backyard to look like that? If you're already doing it?
No, I understand, you know, so, you know, we're hardly making it, you know, we're not.
I think, I think everybody's made their points, thank you. Yep, very good, thank you. Are there any other people, members of the public who would like to address the commission at this time?
Yes, I'm Wood.
Yep, can you please state your name and your address?
Sure, it's Deborah Shabel, I live on 4013 Fourth Street.
Thank you.
My concern is right now about that hookah. Now, a while back, we had a hookah bar across 40th that had a lot of traffic, we had a lot of garbage on the streets, coming and going, that if you allow a hookah at this particular restaurant, you don't have adequate parking. The parking is going to go overflow on 40, on, on Fourth Street like it did with that other hookah lounge, and that really disrupted the, quite a bit. Now, that place was open until 1:00. Now, you're saying, what, 9:00 on weekdays and 10:00 week, weekends? I'm desolate against allowing them to have hookah.
Okay.
Because I really fear that they are going to use Fourth Street as an overflow parking.
Okay, thank you very much, Deborah.
You're welcome.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to address the commission?
Yes, please.
Please come right up.
Hello. Good evening.
Please state your name and, and your address.
Joan.
And yeah, if you could maybe move that microphone, that'd be awesome, thank you.
All right, yeah. My name is Joan Dobbs, I also own the house at 4024 Fourth Street Northeast. I was also here during the last planning commission for this really beautiful restaurant.
In 2013?
Yeah, it is. And so, obviously, you guys have already addressed my main concern, which is the balcony area with the noise and the lights coming into the neighborhood. And so, obviously you guys have already addressed my main concern, which is the balcony area with the noise and the lights coming into the neighborhood and the privacy factor. There is a noise factor with the patio currently, and that is that we, we've had a habit of plowing the sidewalk on Fourth Street and we've run into people plowing the sidewalk from your restaurant, you know? And we've been told that out on the patio, that they want it to be like a gathering spot, that it's not just customers, that it's, it's open to the community to come in, too. And that's when some of those late nights have been happening. And so, maybe that's something that can be reined in to help with this, that it maybe is just a, a restaurant gathering. And at the meeting last time, it was said that because of the hookah experience at the other place off of Fortieth, the planning commission then said that they would not have another hookah house in Columbia Heights. And at that time, it was agreed on that this establishment would not become a hookah house. So I would like to know why that has changed.
So that's a good question, and I won't speak for city staff, but I, my gut feeling is that there's nothing in the city ordinance that allows us to restrict that legally.
So sorry, if I could just chime in, the difference between this establishment and the one that is on, you said, was it on Central or Fortieth?
It was on Fortieth, right next to Sarnow.
Okay. This, if they do choose to have hookah at this establishment, it would be only outside. And that's, my understanding is that was the, the use of the patio would both be for outdoor dining, but would be able and allowed to accommodate outdoor smoking as well.
And there's nothing in the city ordinance, as far as you know, that we can, that we have the power to restrict that. Is that correct?
Sorry, yes. So the city ordinance does not speak to outdoor smoking establishments?
Thank you. So that, hopefully that answers your question. Which, which means that if you want that to be a restriction, you'd have to talk to the city council.
Okay, so if I have a problem with the hookah house being on their, on their patio outside, how does that work next to a daycare? There's a lot of questions.
It sounds to me like there's, and I think we addressed this earlier, too. It sounds like there is a, a kind of a gap in our city ordinance and some areas that maybe we do need to address. And this commission can certainly start those discussions.
So, and then again, as a reminder, this is a site plan review, so we did not get into the deep details of the operations in which we were unable to condition because we're focused on the structure here.
Thank you.
I could add, so smoking is really regulated by the state through the Clean Indoor Air Act and it's focused primarily on prohibiting smoking indoors across the state. And they do allow for smoking patios.
But I believe a daycare is considered a learning institution and there's a, like a, a footage that you cannot be by that building.
It very well could be a commission.
I just don't know. If it's 50 or 100 feet of the structure, you cannot have any type of-
They would be relegated by any state law.
Right, but I, I-
But the enforcement of it was the, the next issue. The-
I know it's minimum of 50 feet that they can't be by any entrance or building.
Maybe city, if we do table this, maybe city staff could address that question for the next round.
I think that's a, definitely a fair thing to ask of city staff to, to look into the smoking proximity question. The, the city doesn't license the activity of smoking. We, we license the sale of tobacco products or related products.
But the Clean Air Act does have something with lean learning institutions and minimum footage that you can have any tobacco product by. And I think this is going to be within the guidelines of not being able to have any kind of outdoor tobacco use due to the daycare.
I think that's very appropriate to be said.
Yeah, I think your point's right on, Mike. So let's, but please, ma'am, you still have the floor. If you have anything else to add, please do.
No, thank you very much for answering my questions. I appreciate that. And for the further looking into the, to the issues, I really appreciate that also. I just want to bring back up that one issue of during non-business hours that the patio is left open to the community, that perhaps that could be ceased, that when the business is closed and there is not activities going on out on the patio into the late hours of the night, that I would like that to be a part of it.
That sounds like a request to the, to the owner of the building would be appropriate. I don't think there's anything we can do to enforce that.
Okay.
In my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public seeing, I think everybody in the room has spoken, so, except maybe you, you're good. Okay, so we're all good here. I will now close the public hearing and invite any discussion amongst the commission. I guess, and I would maybe start by a question to you, Minerva. Do you have a preference whether we deny this or table it, if that is the will of the commission?
So another option that may be viable would be to condition this project as proposed to move forward without an upper deck. So I know it wouldn't read very well, but as I research other-
To be honest, I don't think, I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think the applicant has-
I would be comfortable with that. I'm just speaking my opinion, but I would, I would absolutely be comfortable with moving forward without the upper deck and just the patio expansion. Again, you know, with the stipulations that the, the requirements need to be followed. I absolutely appreciate people wanting to be outside in Minnesota. And, and I appreciate you owning a business in Columbia Heights and I, I would like to see that thrive also. But I understand that, you know, there's, there's some other factors at play here. And I would be open without the upper deck to see them move forward.
I think I'd rather be seen it tabled for he has ample time to find out about the smoking backset before he puts in a lot more time and effort into this project to see if it's even going to be feasible for his business plan.
Okay.
Was the smoking even a, a topic with all of this?
I don't remember that as a topic in 2013 that I could very, I could have, I don't remember that.
You'd have to worry about later. I guess, is, is the decky's proposing? Is it within all the pri, previous parameters?
So, so maybe walk us through what would be required then, Minerva, if we decided to approve the plan without the addition of the upper deck? Would we need to make technical changes in this document or?
So if it were to be tabled, I mean, it could essentially just be added as a condition, as I was trying to state before. It wouldn't read very well, but I have seen it done with projects in the past. And I had a question mark on it. I've never done it that way. But essentially, a, a deck would be proposed, but a condition would be to deny it for building permits, right? So it would, and then, so when they come in for, with building permit plans, it would be required to omit any deck or future built, or you know, future build of a deck.
So what have you got to say about the shielding and the, and the noise in the back? Is that, was that all covered in a previous okay to this plan? Or is this plan been-
There was a plan in 2013 that apparently the applicant did not follow, but, I mean, it was certainly discussed at that time, but I don't know that. I mean, the, yeah, what's your, your kind of reason, I mean, what's, what's your-
If we say okay, I mean, do we know with enough details to say, okay, build your deck? I mean, if you didn't do it right the first time.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, how was he going to do it right the second time?
Then that's, I totally agree with you, Stan. I think that that's why I'm not really comfortable with this. Because I think that addition, clarity in what we are approving is important, basically due to the history of this, this property.
Plus, I have one other big concern is if we're making the daycare restrict their outdoor noise and use, we'd almost have to restrict his for the same.
We have to have a legal justification for doing that and we have to have the authority to do that, which we don't have right now. I mean, they have to abide by city ordinance, but-
Right.
We don't have the power right now to add an additional condition because they're not asking for a-
We're asking one property not to have any outside noise and the property right next door is getting a free go-ahead?
Well-
That's your opinion, I guess. I mean, yeah, I mean, if, if that's your opinion, that's your opinion.
Okay.
It's certainly not ideal.
No, it's not. It's not fair either.
But I don't know what choice we have legally.
Right, right.
So that's, I guess that's where I'm coming from.
I think we should table it until we get some answers for a lot of the questions.
Is there anybody else who wants to discuss on this or are we ready to table this? Anybody online?
I have a question.
Who is that? Who is this?
This is Deb, this is Deb Shabel.
I'm sorry, ma'am, the, the public hearing is now closed.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Commissioner, you know, I know Tom and, Tom and I both have comments. And Tom, you're raising your hand first, so I want you to-
Go ahead, please. I'm, I'm sorry, guys. I haven't, I can hardly see the screen, so please forgive me for not noticing you. But go ahead, please.
You know, we've had really good conversations on this, to this point. And, and I think we're all in agreement that, that the, the elevated deck is a concern to all on, on the commission. I, I also have a, a concern about the enlarged patio. You know, Commissioner Kaiser, you, you laid it out pretty well that had, had we built this with this, with this intention in mind, we would have cited this building or asked to cite this building a little differently to be respectful of the neighbors. Another part of this plan is an enlarged patio, so I feel like we're making a bad situation worse with even the patio component to this. And I'm, I'm curious to hear other commissioners' comments on that and thoughts on that. I, I am opposed to the, to the elevated deck, but I also have additional concerns specifically on the item four, talking about impact to the, to the neighbors adjacent to the property with an enlarged deck with a large roof placed over that, that patio.
Yeah, I, I would like to just jump on that and say that similarly on that letter D under findings of fact, I, I think we're not just magnifying an adverse impact. I think we're creating adverse impacts here. And not just about the rooftop deck, but about the, the ground level patio as well. So I would personally be voting to deny this with or without the rooftop deck.
All right. Any other commissioners have any thoughts along those lines, then?
I wouldn't have a problem denying the whole project either.
I guess I'm not personally convinced at this point, but I'd certainly be willing to hear arguments about why the, why the enlarged patio would be making things worse. I mean, it seems like an obvious thing, but I'd like to hear you say it.
Well, my, my thought with that, if I could expand on it, is that, I mean, we, we already know that there's adverse conditions happening at that patio. And now we're taking that patio, we're making it larger, we're getting it closer to the neighbors. If I'm, if I'm reviewing the site plan, the proposed site plan appropriately, and we're consolidating that noise underneath the roof now. That, that roof is going to impact the, the way the noise travels. And, and making it closer to the neighbors that are already there, that are already noticing complaints and having adverse impacts from this property. I, I just can't see how I can vote to approve a project that, that is probably going to make that worse.
A quick question for you, Minerva, if I may. If we deny this, is the existing site plan still in force?
Yes. So the, if this project were to be denied or even not act upon, let's say you were to approve it and that the, that would, it would supersede the old approval. If you choose to deny it, then the governing document would be the previous site plan approval.
Which, which allows for a patio in the back.
Still allows for a patio.
Of a smaller size than it currently is right now.
Correct.
But no upper deck.
And no upper deck.
With no upper deck.
That's right. Thank you very much. All right, I guess I'd like to move forward on this unless anybody else has any thing that they've, um. So right now, we're discussing between, it sounds like we're discussing between a motion to deny the site plan approval or table it. Is there, is there a motion on the floor? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table it.
Okay, it's been motion, the, has, a motion has been made to table the case number 2021-0401. Is there a second for that?
Quick question.
If we, if we approve the, this is not in order right now to have a discussion, I'm sorry. If we approve this, that's it? If you want to deny this, then this, we would have to defeat the motion that is currently before us. Is there a second for this motion?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we table case number 2021-0401. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Nowitzki?
No.
Wolf?
Yes.
Fiorendino?
Uh, I'm going to wait. I'll go last.
Kaiser?
No.
Hoyam? Vargas?
Yes.
Sanao?
No.
And then-
Is it 3-3? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm, um, I'm going to vote to a no against tabling this motion. I would like us to act on this tonight. Are there any other motions before the commission? Were any other motions-
I'd like to make a motion to deny the-
It, uh, has, a motion has been made to deny case 20210401. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we deny the application 2021-0401. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Nowitzki?
Yes.
Wolf?
No.
Uh, Kaiser?
Yes.
Hoyam?
Yes.
Vargas?
No.
Sanao?
Yes.
And Fiorendino?
Yes. This case has been, uh, your application has been denied, sir. The current, uh, plan is in, in force at this point. Our next case before the commission is, is that number correct? An interim use permit for Renaissance Fireworks temporary tent sales. Minerva, please take us through this case.
Sorry, for those of you on Zoom, are you able to see the PowerPoint presentation on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So the second and final public meeting item this evening is an interim use permit for Renaissance Fireworks at 4001 Central Avenue Northeast. The permit is to approve, to allow for the operation of a seasonal fireworks sales tent in the parking lot of the property here in question between the dates of June 25th, 2021, and July 5th of 2021, with hours of operations being from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Seasonal fireworks sales are permitted as an interim use in the central business zoning district where the operation is being proposed. The location of the sales tent to, is proposed to be on the easterly portion of the property near the central entrance to the shopping center. The properties to the north, south, and west of the site are also in the central business zoning district, while the properties on the east are in the multiple family residential district, also known as R4. The proposed use is commercial in nature, making it compatible to the commercial business district. One neighboring resident reached out to the city this afternoon in opposition of the proposed interim sales tent. I spoke to her to clarify that the fireworks were only to be sold and not set off at the location in question. I also informed her that this interim use permit has been applied for and issued on an annual basis for over 10 years. No complaints or issues had been reported in the past about their annual operation on Central Avenue. The proposed interim use will not impose hazards or disturbing influences on neighboring properties and will not substantially diminish the use of property in the immediate vicinity. The fire chief will conduct an onsite inspection prior to any temporary sales of fireworks. All state and city requirements regarding fireworks sales will be achieved. Additionally, both vehicular and foot traffic will be maintained onsite as to not cause congestion on public roadways. The proposed interim use of a fireworks sales tent will not cause a negative cumulative effect on other uses in the immediate vicinity. The project complies with all findings of facts listed in section 9.104I of the city's zoning ordinance and shall be conditioned accordingly. Thus, staff recommends approval for an interim use permit for Renaissance Fireworks to set up a sales tent at 4001 Central Avenue Northeast. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Planner Hark. Are there any questions for city staff?
No, they've been good tenants every year and I don't see a problem with it.
I have a comment that in their justification, they've got a material safety data sheet dated 1986. Which is kind of, probably not valid anymore.
Not up to MDF standards.
Otherwise, they've, yeah, they've come by and we've approved it for 10 or 12 years. I have no objection.
All right, not hearing any questions. I'll open this, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this interim use permit application? All right, hearing no one from the public, is there any discussion on this? Hearing no discussion, a, a motion to approve or not approve would be in order. And I believe there are sample motions in our packets.
Going to read this.
I'm going to read this.
This is Tom. I'll move to waive the reading of resolution number 2021-PZ03. There being ample copies available to the public.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we waive the reading of resolution 2021-PZ03. We have a roll call vote, please.
Nowitzki?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Fiorendino?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Hoyam?
Yes.
Vargas?
Yes.
Sonao?
Excellent.
I move to adopt the resolution 2021-PZ03, being a resolution approving for an interim use permit for fireworks tent at 4001 Central Avenue from June 25 to July 5, 2021, subject to certain conditions. And it looks like there's 12 of them there.
The conditions printed in the in the documentation. Is there a second?
I second.
Moved and seconded that we approve resolution number 2021-PZ03, which is a resolution before the commission. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Nowitzki?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Fiorendino?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Hoyam?
Yes.
Vargas?
Yes.
Sonao?
Wonderful. Before we get to the last item, I would ask the indulgence of the commission for a moment. Is there anyone here who would like us to perhaps ask city staff for a recommendation on ways that the code may be improved as far as what we talked about before? It seems like there's a lack of, 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 a lack on this topic, but of the border between commercial and residential properties. And I just wonder if anyone on the commission had any appetite for that and if the city staff had any comments.
I think I'd like to thank the commission for a good meeting tonight. I think, you know, start there. It was a robust conversation around some tough issues. And I think you guys handled it really well. We had good testimony. This was a challenging site plan. I think it's going to continue to be difficult on these integration sites where we have commercial adjoining residential. And if you look at our zoning zoning map, they're everywhere. You know, this, a restaurant is an intense use, especially in expansion of this outdoor component. So this is a unique, I think we should look at an outdoor dining CUP potentially. I've worked in cities where outdoor dining is a specific CUP with more robust and specific standards. But the noise issue is always going to be a little bit up for grabs where you really have to rely on some of your nuisance ordinance to get in there and do enforcement. It's nobody's favorite, but staff aren't out there with noise meters, you know, doing compliance checks. It just, if they can operate and live within reasonable standards, then you don't have complaints. So I think we can find a, strike a balance, specific to outdoor dining, introduce an ordinance for your review at a later date that helps deal with this. I don't think we have a ton of outdoor dining sites in the city, is another thing.
Yeah, opportunities don't really pose themselves as I see it.
We got Sarnas, we got this one, a lot of our other restaurants, but there are enough.
Yeah, there's a few, there's a few empty buildings on Central.
And we'll have new development. We'll have outdoor dining at the new city hall, for example. We'll have outdoor dining with future developments that we think are in the pipeline. So I think it is a conversation worth having and and.
I'd like to, I'd like to add one thing on that note. And forgive me because this is exactly what I do for a living. But I write about delivery, restaurant delivery for a living. And because Columbia Heights has so many fast food restaurants, there is something that I think will come to our desk probably sooner rather than later. And that is, a lot of these fast food restaurants are about to be pretty dramatically rebuilding themselves. And I'm not saying necessarily within Columbia Heights, but just kind of across the board related to what's happened because of the pandemic. And a lot of these facilities are going to be adding a lot more ways to, first of all, they all want to add more drive-through lanes wherever possible. And, you know, that's going to be a pretty hot topic across the country. But also adding ways for customers to walk up and grab meals without having to go inside the restaurant, even after, you know, the pandemic is just an ugly memory. You know, being able to allow more portals for customers to grab their food without having to go inside the restaurant, that's still going to become, that's still going to be very, very important, even long after the pandemic. And also spaces for delivery drivers, like spaces that are dedicated outside of the restaurants for delivery drivers, that's something that a lot of municipalities are going to have to react to and catch up with. And so if that's something that any of, you know, especially quick service restaurants haven't approached the city with, it's probably wise for the city to to get moving on that proactively. Because if you haven't been approached about that yet, I would be willing to bet money you will be approached on that within the next 12 to 18 months. That's just something I would throw out there because I'm, I'm talking to restaurant CEOs about that every single day.
So Erin, I'm in there, you got your, we're cut out for you then.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I mean, I come from a place where every, you know, I come from a city where drive-throughs, they had a memorandum for the, what do they call it? Moratorium, I'm sorry, a moratorium in place because they were so, in so much demand, and the city couldn't handle the upflow. And so we put a whole pause on them until we could put an ordinance in play. Same thing does go for outdoor dining, of course, as it is more preferred now in more than a temporary manner, right? So there was a lot of things that came in for temporary outdoor dining, and now people want it more permanent, Affendina being one of them. And I think our city, our city ordinances can be stronger in addressing those.
You know, just one final note on that, you know, I think for, you know, whether it's something like White Castle or Wendy's, you know, I think it is pretty much across the board. If they have one drive-through lane now, they're probably already making plans to figure out how they can get a second down the property. So anyway, I'll shut up now, but that's something that I'm talking about every single.
Mr. Chair, if I could just confirm with the commission, I think it's very clear, but any motion to deny an application, we really need to be clear that we have the rationale. It's really condition four was not met. I think that that's the one that we've all zeroed in. The site plan does not minimize any adverse impacts on property in the immediate vicinity and the public right away. I just want to get a confirmation, if I can, before we leave, that that's, that is our rationale so that we can very clearly memorialize.
Do you need a motion along those lines or informal poll of the commissioners?
It's more than implied, Mr. Chair, but I just, I wanted one last bit of.
That's certainly my opinion and.
My opinion.
You know, I was the devil's advocate on there. That plan that was proposed by Affendina had so many holes in it. The survey was bad, the engineering comments were about stucco, and it's a lap siding that was just off. You know, I was looking to table to give the owner an opportunity to to do something improved, a better idea. But really, it's not appropriate for that area. But, you know, since I've been here, I haven't seen a business come in here and get, get a good, you know, a good deal or come out of here, you know, winning. So it was just more of a devil's advocate type of thing. But what I'm concerned about is, you know, the 2017 tax bill eliminated funding for low-cost housing. And that's why you've seen a slowdown in these apartments. And we're about to have a massive infrastructure bill and a new tax bill. And it's going to have that component for affordable housing. And that corner there on 40th and University is very attractive to developers. And we're probably going to be sitting in this same room two, three years from now for a 50-unit, you know, apartment building. And I wonder how the neighbors are going to feel about the 50-unit apartment building versus the the restaurant.
An interesting point, perhaps for another day.
Exactly.
Wonderful. All right, a motion to adjourn is now in order.
Second.
Yeah, I haven't, is you, you're making, it's been moved that we adjourn the meeting. Without objection, the meeting is adjourned.
Commissioners, we do have applications in with staff, so there will be a planning commission meeting.
Thank you. For, yes, for you online, we will have a planning commission meeting on May 4. Thank you.
Good. See you then, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for a very good meeting and welcome to the zoo, Clara.
Thank you. This is a good first, first session, honestly. Yeah, that works.